Okay, it's six thirty. Um, I, I will call the meeting to order and. We'll do the plug in. Okay, so, um, can I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
A motion to adopt the agenda. I'd like to add, we can have a discussion on, um, the revenue and expense reports that we had thought about, uh, being submitted to the board.
Okay.
At the end of each quarter.
So, um, someone want to second that, amend the agenda? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we have all the minutes of two twenty-seven, twenty-three. Someone want to make a motion for that? All approved of minutes. Second. Any discussion or? Is everyone in favor?
Yes.
Anybody opposed? No? Okay, can I have a motion to elect the Chair of the Select Board?
Like to make a motion to nominate Jeff King, Chair for the Select Board?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussions? Any opposed? So, everyone in favor? Okay, all right, I'll, I'll hand it over to you, Jeff.
Okay, yeah, motion, uh, nomination for Vice Chair? For your nomination for Vice Chair?
Nomination for your Vice Chair.
For your second. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Any comments or questions by the Board? All in favor? Motion carried. Yeah, let's go on to the, wait a minute, do you want to continue down that or would you like to go back to the road report?
Um.
Continue down.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a storm. We can, the road report now, so that you can leave early.
Yes, you want to do that?
Yeah.
So, we hired Andrew, we hired Andrew Austin as the new full-time employee. Um, Gary is finished. Gary needs finished his, uh, help with us for the winter, got us through the winter. Truck four got, or Truck two got four new tires that blew, blew one and it had one that was about to blow. So, we had to replace all four rear tires of the rear axle on that truck. Truck two also had to have the dash completely tore apart and steering wheel for rubbing wires that caught, kept causing blowing fuses. And without that fuse, the truck would not even start or stay running. That happened during the, the last storm. Uh, and that was approximately a six-hour fix that Richard Ferguson had did for us again. Uh, but it is now up and running. And Truck one got a flat during the previous storm, a steer tire while he was out in the road. So, we had, you know, we had some prolonged delays during the storm there on multiple ends, but we gotta go on anyways and continued on. Truck three slid off a metal lane that kind of held that up for a little bit and, uh, we were able to get him back up without any damage. However, the lug nuts did come off the rear driver side duals and we lost both little rims. Um, yeah, the rims were racing the truck down one forty and, uh, he was able to nurse it to in front of roadside motors and, uh, we got the Ram dealership to take care of that for us. Um, due to the new lug nuts and the recall. Um. Truck one currently has a blown fusible link, which means that no power in the truck at all. You, you can't get lights or anything, you can't get the truck to start, so Dick's actually at the garage working on that currently and it's where we're headed after this. Um, and we foresee having that truck up and going by nine P M., nine, ten P M. tonight. Um, it's not just a small fuse for anybody that's not unaware, it's, you have to pull the entire starter, starter off the engine of this truck and it's not just a quick thing, so I just, you know, some people you think fuse, you think just quick, quick fix or whatever, it's, it's not the case at all, there's a lot of time that goes into this.
The capacitor in the starter?
It goes from the starter to the P C M., to the computer, basically. Um, control, you know, it's like the brain, basically, so. Um, and some good things, we did, we met with Sarah Pelkey and Alan and Paul and we went out and we did a little, uh, surveying for the wayfinding sign grant that we'll be getting. And, uh, Sarah's kind of keeping that going until we get the signs in and everything and then we can start the install on that. Some of those will be in the village, some of those will be in town. If anybody wants to know. Um, other than that, there's really not a whole lot to report, the roads do look pretty rough for anybody that's questioning that. Uh, there's really nothing we can do until we get some solid weather and we can start grading and stuff. Uh, it's just, we're just gonna have to deal with that in the meantime, basically. And I did bring these, I got these from the Ram dealership because we picked that truck back up today. Everybody wants to look or pass them around, these, this is what's starting to happen to all the corrosion due to non-replacing trucks, so. Um, and we've got that in other areas as well on the truck, but he just, he sent me back with those so anybody could take a look at them.
What does that really mean, not exactly, when your truck is really old?
Yeah, uh, well, Truck three's sole purpose basically in the winter is salt, so that's all that truck really sees. And, you know, you're, you're on the pavement all the time with it, so you're just splashing that salt everywhere. It got right up into the wiring harness and everything in the transmission and the side, it goes from the transmission to the engine. And just, it just destroyed, destroyed it, so.
Can those trucks be undercoated too right now?
They could, yeah, we, we could undercoat, we could undercoat all of our equipment, actually.
We get a new vet, new, if we get the funding and we're capable of building a new town garage, we should seriously think about a way to wash underneath the vehicles after the storm.
An undercarriage wash, I've been thinking about that as well, yeah. Yeah, even if it's something that we can just kind of make it that'll, that'll, that'll serve its purpose, then that would be great, cause that's, that's probably, you know, we like the trucks to look nice, but realistically, there's a lot more to it, they, they need to actually be clean on underside, that's the most important part.
They end up giving you any trade-in value for that?
I've not heard back from A T G about that, yeah, I did submit pictures and a mile odometer reading to A T G, which is where we buy our big trucks from now. Uh, Westminster Vermont and, um, working on getting a trade-in value for Truck one, cause we dumped so much money into it recently and as we can see, we're still having ongoing issues with it, so. It's, it'd be a shame to dump more money into that truck and then turn around and get rid of it and, you know, if I, I, my professional and personal opinion would be, we start a replacement plan immediately, start working on getting a new truck for the, to replace that, and whether we get a, a diesel emission reduction grant for that truck or we get a good trade-in price, I think we need to move on it quickly.
For Truck one?
Yeah, because it's, it's really causing issues. So, if Dick cannot, for some unforeseen reason, get that truck up and running tonight, uh, we will be able to use the, the, the new truck, the used truck, the twenty-fourteen International that we bought a couple of months ago from A T G. But with that plow setup, uh, we're gonna have to be extremely, I mean, we're gonna have to be careful anyways on the gravel roads tomorrow, cause they're so soft, but it'll be, uh, with that particular plow setup, it's, it's gonna be really challenging, so that has to do gravel, so.
And we came up over Castle Town up by Bird's Eye and up by Pond Hill and came from Rutland home yesterday that way on the back roads, cause I wanted to kind of see.
Took your truck there?
Yeah, I got home and immediately pressure washed it.
I'm sure you did.
But I had my life drive. Um, actually, you know, they're soft in places. But, uh.
It's pretty.
Coming down the hill where you guys worked on the Pond Hill Road last year.
Yeah.
That is in excellent shape.
Yeah, and that's our.
That's all we gotta get the back, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of work.
And, uh, Lewis Road is gonna be, uh, our heavy concern, because it is the most traveled gravel road that we've got this summer and it's, it's probably actually needs the most help of all of them as well, so that'll be our primary focus come our construction months.
I think one of my, one of my thoughts is, I know Dickie does a lot of our repairs, are you keeping track of what he does in hours? Because it was.
I told him to start, to start putting his hours of, uh, mechanic work in parentheses and, you know, keep a separate log of that or keep that on a timesheet, yeah.
Well, because he, when he gets called for you, he got called if I wrote to, I got called saying, why is anybody on my road? Cause I had someone coming. And I was like, I don't know, so I found out, Dickie got called to take the fix the tire and do the trucks, I met you guys at.
He came to help me.
And he wasn't on the road because he was helping you guys.
Fortunately, I was able to find out that, what was going on with my truck, so I was able to tell him what parts I needed and he just brought the parts up and I could send him back out. But right before he was about to head back out, was when Kevin called and said that his truck got a flat steer tire. Dick was already off his route, I could finish mine and then pick up the slack, you know, I mean, we tried, but it just, it gets, it gets extremely overwhelming.
You may have people.
Yeah. You may have people and it, with chains on, you're, you're doing fifteen, twenty miles an hour, so.
Extremely lucky to have someone like Dick for this municipality, cause somebody repairs that he's talking about, I saw this last week and diving into that steering column and everything, it would be.
Just don't want to take advantage of him, because he does do a good job and he's always there, so we just need to.
That's why compensations on the road crews, extremely important.
Yeah, he's, uh, I mean, was up after, after Truck two broke there with the fuse and stuff and he tore that dashboard apart. I think he put in five of those six hours, four or five of those six hours on Sunday, he came in and did it. It's, you know, it's best for him when, when there's not a bunch of people around asking a million questions and, you know, you just, you gotta be able to focus, you're, you're chasing thousands of wires through a truck and you, you know, it's like trying to find a needle in a haystack, you know, you, you can start here, you can start there, and then somebody pulls your attention away for five minutes and you've completely forgot what you're doing, so. He's a huge asset, absolutely huge asset and, uh, I just hope it goes noticed as well.
Well, thanks. Keep us, keep us, keep logging those hours of mechanic.
We will, we will. So.
So, Joe, what's happened to the Hampton truck?
The Hampton, the Hampton truck is still getting fixed here in LA. Yeah, they had ordered the parts, uh, there was a problem with Charley Boys where they ordered the parts from. And, um, apparently the, the service or the parts guy had quit with a whole list of parts that he was supposed to have ordered that never got ordered, so this is what I was told by, by Avalanche Truck. It is in the process, yes, and as soon as it's fixed, it's going back. Before something else. Yeah, um, we were kind of thinking that maybe a, we may have to throw a new refurbished transmission on that truck. But fortunately, pretty quick, Dan, Dan Reed that runs Avalanche, um, noticed that it was a tab and a couple of forks or whatever, so we're looking at probably around eight hundred dollar fix on that, if you want a, a rough idea.
That's on truck number what?
That's the Hampton's loaner truck. And, uh, I know it's a lot of money to put in somebody else's truck, but we gotta realize how many months we got, and then the rental fee is nine hundred something dollars a week from A T G if you were to rent a truck from them. So, I think we could consider ourselves lucky on this and
Yes.
Be grateful that we got, we got.
This is our last week's tour.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're right there where you're praying for that one, so.
We may not give it as bad as this, the saying, it, it's a sudden storm. The perfect.
If there's more than a dusting, you're still gonna have to hit the gravel roads and.
I know, but it won't be the eighteen inches.
Yeah. So.
Anything else?
If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, I'm happy to.
Thank you for all you do.
You're welcome.
Early mornings, late nights.
Anybody have any questions for Joel?
If it does start tonight, we'll be up early in the night.
Yeah.
Just bear with us.
Oh, yes. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank the crew.
Yes, thank everybody for us. You can head out if you wish.
Okay.
You can take the rest up for a while. You have another thirty-six hour tour party coming up.
No rest for the wicked.
Okay. Um. We'll continue on with our agenda.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Joe, do you want to do the appointments of the, uh, appointed town officers?
Yes, that's, that was, was, we can finish that up, appoint, appointment of town officers.
Okay, so we've got the Constable, uh, Dale Kerber.
Mm-hmm. Motion to appoint Dale Kerber as Constable.
Make a motion to appoint Dale Kerber as Constable.
For your second. Any comments or questions by the Board? All in favor? Yep, there's one.
Got Dog Warden, myself and Mark Stackpole.
Okay, Dog Warden?
Make a motion for Paul. All might help to be Dog Warden.
That's something we're gonna, that's something we're gonna have to address, is really hire somebody to go. Talk about that later. Uh, motion to appoint Paul and Mark Stackpole as. You, you said it, for your second. Any comments or questions by the Board? All in favor? Motion carried.
Uh, Fourth of July Director. Is Judy want to do it?
Not sure. I'm up for Wednesday, but I don't want to do it, so I'm hoping that she might want to take it along with it. Yeah.
You want to table that one, table it?
Table the Fourth of July Director.
It wasn't a no, so we can take it as.
I think you'll have more information after Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got the Planning Commission, um, we already know Neil Reeland is, is, uh, does not want to do it anymore.
I talked with Steve Broughton and we interviewed him. And the Board knows him. There's someone who, but he is very interested in, in being on the Planning Commission and D R B.
I, I have spoken to somebody who's coming Wednesday. That is a perspective.
For the D R B?
G S J Jonathan Andrews, he's new in town, I've talked to him a few times. He's gonna meet, cause we have a meeting on Wednesday.
For the D R B?
Oh, actually the Planning. And he will get Dick if he wants to. He has requests, it's interest.
So, is he interested in the Planning Commission and the D R B?
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that level yet. I have some work about.
Well, Steve Broughton also would like to be involved with the Planning Commission and D R B, how many openings is there on the Planning Commission and D R B?
So, there's two, currently two, um, vacant seats on the D R B. And, um, there's, with Neil Reeland, are, are you seeking to be on the Planning Commission again?
That's something as a Select Board member, it would be better if you could. Yeah, come and be the Select Board member and, um, if you would take about that.
Let me think about it. There, there is no real conflict interest.
Well, there isn't, I'm not saying a conflict of interest, I'm just saying it would ethically look better if we had you here with us on the Select Board. Um, I came off those two positions, D R B and Planning Commission.
Well, we have some work that we pick in the middle.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
I understand that. Okay, what about Steve Broughton, can we appoint him to those positions tonight?
And, I mean, would the Board want to speak?
Would they like to speak, Joel?
We spoke to him.
Yeah, we did, but these two guys have not. You know them first. Is, are you okay with? You okay with that?
I'm okay with it, but you have to let it first.
Are you okay with it, Alan?
Yeah.
Are you okay with it, Mark?
Uh, I do have something coming on Wednesday.
But there's more, there's, there's two of them.
Well, he, he's got so many interests in the Planning Commission. And there's one, if there, if he stays on the Planning Commission, there's one vacancy.
Okay. Well, we can appoint Steve Broughton to the D R B right now. You okay with that, Mark?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, we'll appoint, a motion to appoint Steve Broughton to the Development Review Board?
Make a motion to appoint Steve Broughton to the D R B.
For your second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions by the Board? All in favor? All eyes?
So, you'll meet with them on Wednesday with someone and then they'll bring it back to the Select Board?
Yeah. Yes.
So, no, nobody's opposed to that? Okay, motion carried, Steve is on the D R B.
Okay, so there's Jamie Lee for the Planning Commission.
Motion for Jamie Lee on the Planning Commission.
Make a motion for Jamie Lee on the Planning Commission.
For your second.
So, you have that in second.
Any comments or questions by the Board? All in favor? Motion carried.
There's Doug Langdon for the Planning Commission.
And who else is on the Planning Commission?
Mary Sue Reed.
Okay, for those two people, for the Planning Commission, for your motion for Doug Langdon and Mary Sue Reed, Planning Commission.
Well, how many do we need, is that?
Five.
Billings up, what does that give us?
Well, there's, someone else asked me I can make a motion and second it for Mark Teeter on the Planning Commission as well. So, can we?
All three of them.
Can we do one, one at a time?
One at a time. All right, for.
Um, Doug Langdon.
Doug Langdon. Motion for Doug Langdon?
Make a motion for Doug Langdon.
For your second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carried.
Mary Sue Reed.
Motion for Mary Sue.
Make a motion for Mary Sue.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor? And opposed?
Mark Teeter.
Mark Teeter for Planning Commission?
Make a motion to nominate Mark Teeter for Planning Commission.
Second? Any comments or questions by the Board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, we've got Recreation Director, um, or Director's. We still have two, Cheryl and, um, Jonas. Do you want to be, what do you want, motion for Cheryl?
For Cheryl.
Um, motion for Cheryl, for the Rec Director?
Motion for Cheryl for Rec Director.
For your second. Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carried.
Do you want another?
I want a week.
Good.
You can be supreme.
You can bring up to us some all week.
I have a meeting coming up and conversations and things.
You have somebody who doesn't mind?
I have a meeting coming up. Yeah, I hope so, I have a meeting coming up, so. Make some decisions.
Uh, we have, uh, Rutland County Solid Waste District. Apparently that's me.
Right, motion for Paul for Rutland County Solid Waste District Rep.
Motion for Paul for Solid Waste Rep.
Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carried.
We did the next two, um, recently, but I think we need to do them again. The Regional Planning Commission with, um, Sarah Pelkey being the first and myself being the, um, alter, in the Rutland Regional Transportation Council. The first being, um, Sarah and the second being myself.
Are you in motion?
Yeah.
So, thank you, that much, can you make a motion? Provoked, for your second?
Is that for those of them?
Yeah, that's provoked on you.
Okay.
Any comments or questions by the Board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Can't read my handwriting. Cat collector, which is town manager, town energy coordinator, which is me. Town Services Officer, which is me.
We lump you into one big sum and we just raid all your hats so we can.
Zone administrator, which is me.
Motion for them?
Make a motion for Paul and I'll be above.
Second.
Your second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, Free Warden, which is Stephen Sandfield.
Oh, yes, that's right, motion for Stephen. Yes?
I do that.
For your second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Oh, any opposed? Motion carried.
Would we do Sarah in that? Would you, we?
Yes. Welcome, she's the lead, he's the backup.
And lastly, we have the Auto Freak Communications Union District, which is, uh, currently Mark Teeter.
Okay, a motion to provide data for Auto Freak.
I'll make a motion.
For your second. Your second, any comments or questions by the Board? All in favor?
Mark, actually, I'm just, if you want to sign it, yes?
Yeah.
Now, we're getting close.
So, that's it on the appointments? Thank you for letter of support for the P V R C banner project on Main Street? Is that on there? Is it on that? Does anyone know you done that? Is, uh, on the agenda?
Yeah, I think you're looking at different agendas.
That was last, last.
What did I get, the wrong one?
We say we are.
My goodness.
We have to do the adoption of notice posting policy, publishing the newspaper. Currently, we post the agendas, uh, minutes on the website. And we post a, uh, agenda here. Um, on the board here out by, um, Coach Burger, the Holy Public Library and the, um, Post Office. We made a motion for notice posting policy. I hear, uh, not, uh, motion for the notice posting policy and publishing in the newspaper. And the newspaper we're going to use is, we use the Lakes Region Free Press, Lake Region Free Press.
Do we want to include the, uh, website? Website? Yeah. For what? For postings?
Oh, yeah, um, the publishing is when we have to, um, post a, a notice. Um, like, especially internet and stuff, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Are you in motion?
Make a motion for the notice posting policy.
For your second.
I will, yes.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? In favor? All in favor, non-opposed, motion carried. Okay?
I think I've just agenda all.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. We already, we can go right to public comments and concerns and they come into town managers.
But we have.
Oh, yes, we had one more, well.
We have, oh, the other business?
Yeah, that would be. Yeah, that would be a transaction, the other lawful business, we'll do that under that. We'll, we'll just stick with the agenda and come write down public comments and concerns. Mary Sue?
Uh, I want to thank you, thank the board for reappointing me to the planning commission, um. Uh, we're a really good group, we get along really well and we're, we're accomplishing quite a bit, so I appreciate that. Continue working on that. Um, during the informational meeting, I had asked, um, about some of the explanations, um, intergovernment revenues and charges for current services. And I was wondering, um, Paul, maybe, did you find out with that?
I did, um, those are, uh, licensing fees. Uh, uh, like marriage, birth, death. Uh, recording fees for town clerk's office. Um. Transfer station stickers. And bags. Um. That's essentially it.
That's basically all the town fees, like?
Yeah, yeah. The other question you had, um, uh, was what I thought it was, it was the current use, um, money. It was the state funds we get for, uh, the state property. You know, the wildlife preserve in the state, um, the state park. Um, and then the other question that someone brought up about the, um.
Recreation culture?
Yeah, cultural and recreation. Uh, she's looking into that. Uh, the auditor is looking into that. Um, I suggested maybe she had lumped in, um, a grant, oh, yeah, the in- intergovernment also includes the, the, um, the DUI and public safety grants that are run through the constable's office. And it also includes a pass-through grant, uh, that we do with Lacey and Catherine Association. Um, and the other one, I, I had suggested to the auditor, maybe she had put in, uh, the Slate Corey Park grants in there, that's the only thing I can think of, but she, she asked you. She was communicating with Nisha about some additional information before she could answer the question for me.
Yeah, we did have a recreation grant too, I mean, that was something that we had, I'm not sure before.
Were those all your questions?
Uh, no, I have a couple more questions, um. In, in addition to the cultural recreation, that was somebody else's question, but, um, uh, the one right up above that was conservation and development, and I, what I did is I just pulled out the prior years, the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And they, these numbers do not match the final budgets of that year, so some, something was not carryover properly. So like Cheryl said, it might be that the auditor included something that was different, but the numbers don't, didn't carry.
What is that, Mary Sue?
That, that's the letter's report on schedule three. In the, the town report. It doesn't match the twenty twenty-one figures for the budgets.
Well, that's on the auditors.
Yes, on the auditors.
Okay.
Right, I think we have to just check because I know that some of that's grant money that doesn't show up in here, so people don't know, like recreation grant. It's like Corey Grant, some of the grants we've gotten and, uh.
Yeah, we've had that problem before.
Right. Yes, I don't know, there could be other figures in here that are screwball too, so.
Okay.
The auditor really needs to go through that. Um, okay, next question is, uh, again, I think this might have been brought up, but again, it didn't pertain to the informational meeting. Um. The status of the proposed merger of the village and town. Is there any progress or anything to report on that?
Um. Do you have anything to report on, Cheryl?
Um, I think the most recent report out that I did at the select board a, a few weeks ago was probably uh, the most current, we, I, I did some research, um, on the merger, uh, that was, um, in the eighties, that was a special merger for the town, so we did some research there. Um, I reached out to V L C T and a few other state agencies about, um, the process for merger and where we should start, um, we also have some information about it. Um, study that was undertaken by the town and village of Johnson. Uh, where essentially they were looking at the financial benefits of merging those two municipalities. Um, so we have an estimate for that study. Um, and where it currently lies, I think at the last select board meeting when we were talking about it, was after the town meeting day. Um, after the select board had new members that, it, the select board would then, um, look at into, uh, creating that committee with the village, uh, to study merger.
Okay. That was gonna be my question, what, why is that gonna happen?
We're meeting with the village this
Thursday?
Wednesday night, or Thursday night. On tax stabilization.
That was my next question, what's the status of the tax stabilization agreement?
And now we're still in it, in executive session on that, right?
Yeah, we've, um, we've, we've we've had a proposal from Regenerative Land Holdings and there's been discussions about that. There's been one draft of a counter proposal. Um, that the last time this board, uh, minus, uh, the newest member, um, requested some revisions on that, so we're in the process of, this board is in the process of, um, hammering out what their, uh, first official counter proposal to Regenerative Land Holdings would be.
Yeah, I assume the town attorney's involved in this too.
Yes.
I'm sure their attorney's involved in that.
Yes, yes.
That's, we're taking it very slowly so we don't make any mistakes, we want to do it right, so it's not a fast get it done.
You only have one shot at this, so. This has got to be, and it is complex.
Yes, very complex and it's in the town. The, the town definitely needs to benefit from this.
The town has a final say, it's not something we do. Exactly. You, you like, that's to negotiate in good faith, but it comes back to you, so you can say, I don't like what you did and throw it out the window.
And we start all over.
You start all over, whatever, so you have the final say.
The town will vote on that.
But you're going to have public hearings.
Oh, yes.
For that vote.
Yes, before the vote, they'll have public hearings. Well, most certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Most certainly, um, on Thursday night, can we also get on the agenda with the village about a discussion with the merger? And how we would proceed with, with what we're doing so that we're all on the same page?
I think we could probably add to the agenda.
Okay.
And the village meeting is open to the public too?
Mm-hmm, yes, but we will go into executive session on the tax stabilization, just so you know. Because that's still.
Simple question?
Sure.
I just want to confirm what we talked about at the last select board meeting on the Fourth of July and fireworks. Only because in the town clerk's office, we had a couple of organizations stop in and they hadn't heard anything about that. Um, and it makes a difference if they make a commitment to what Foley's doing or to another town. So it's definite that the fireworks will be July first, is that correct, the Saturday?
Yes, it is.
Parade will be July fourth.
Yeah.
And the most recent article from the chamber is saying that there'll be field events and a dance party at the field prior to fireworks, I'm assuming that'll be up for discussion when you have a director appointed for the Fourth of July?
I think they were taking it right off, um, last year, so that's what happened.
Okay.
Nothing to discuss this year.
What they call a dance party is.
A DJ.
John Saltis. DJ.
Yeah, that's the dance party.
Um, I don't, not, not that I'm like standing watching who's dancing, but because I'm usually running the gig or whatever, but.
Right.
I don't think anyone dances.
I, I guess we're just kind of wondering, will any of those events take place since it's only the fireworks and not anything else? But you probably need to wait for a director to be appointed for that answer.
Yes.
So July fourth is the Tuesday then, right? July fourth is Tuesday, it'll be parade, because I'm.
That'll be the parade.
And I gave the, um, fireworks company, uh, July second is the rain date.
Okay. Any other public comments or concerns, is, do we have any hands up? No?
What caused the rain date? Is it just you guys get together and make?
The weather?
Now, I mean, who makes that final call? I'm just curious.
Uh, I think it's the firework. It's a firework company.
Yeah.
So before they get here, they call you and they, they get a decision?
Makes sense, huh?
Yeah, just went up.
What was that?
Big star.
Nick?
Yeah, I thought about it this afternoon, Nick, so I'll, I'll get it out to you tomorrow.
Okay. Any other public comments or concerns? Saying none, we'll move on to the town managers and board?
Um. I, I didn't have anything additional at, at this moment.
Okay.
Uh, we do have liquor licenses from the clerk. Um. For, uh, Lacey and Catherine Country Club and American Nigent. They have three licenses, the first, um, the third, and their outside consumption licenses. Both of them, and the clerk forgot to leave me the form, so if, if if the board, um, does approve it, I'll just have you, Jeff, sign it, sign it tomorrow if you're available.
Yep. Okay. Liquor licenses for, for the, the mentioned parties, do I hear a motion for it? To approve the liquor license?
I would make that.
Oh, you're second. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry. Can you add one?
Yeah, um, I would like to try to get all the revenue and expense reports supplied to the board by the first meeting at the end of each quarter and the highway reports sent to the highway forum.
Hey, you want that in a motion?
Yes, please.
Right, make the motion. Would you read it?
Yeah, so like motion to have all revenue and expense reports supplied to the board by the first meeting after the end of each quarter and the highway reports sent to the highway forum.
Okay. Um, the only comment that I would make on that is, if it's the, depending on, you know, how those days, um, the end of the quarter in comparison to the next meeting, sometimes you, you may find that sometimes those reports aren't completely up to date. So I guess the board has.
Just give us an idea. Okay, motion's on the floor, the motion's been seconded. Any comments or questions by the board?
Hang on. Is it those on the big board? Generated now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Those definitely new?
No.
It's just based on.
It's just more of a of the record of this one, when anyone, okay?
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Any other lawful business? We got Rowland Regional Planning Commission? Anything on that?
Um, so I, I was sworn in as the delegate, but I have not attended the meeting yet, so the first meeting will be.
Oh, you did get sworn in?
Mm-hmm.
Good, thank you. I was gonna ask.
Yes.
About the city board?
Um. Okay, no.
Usually on Thurs- Tuesdays or Thursdays?
Because Tuesdays, because the tax is on Thursdays.
So such a curious thing. Anything on health officers?
Um, no.
We do need an executive session tonight. For personnel issue that came up this week. Um, a motion to sign the board orders before we go into executive session, so we, we come out, we, we.
Make a motion to sign the board.
Sign the boarders? Oh, you're second. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Motion carry. Hey, we gotta go into executive session.